Hi everyone, my name is Anuj Chindal, I welcome you to my channel. Five-year plans were created at the time of independence, two planning commission they were being implemented. But finally, the planning commission was replaced with Neeti Ayog and the era of five-year plans ended. All of us know about this, but very few of us understand whether five-year plans were a failure or a success. What are the rational reasons behind calling it a failure or calling it a success? In order to understand this, we will have to dive deeper into the era of five-year planning in India. Understand the model of five-year plans, what they achieved plan by plan. And then try and compare it with what would have happened without planning. That means the pros and cons of five-year plans and whether they were a failures or a success and the reasons behind that. In today's session, I am going to just do this. I will be telling you the model of five-year plans, we will be discussing all the five-year plans. And then we will try and come to a conclusion whether they were a failure or a success. If you want to watch this video faster, you can move it to 1.5x so that you feel that you are attaining all the information and knowledge fast enough. Let us begin. What exactly was the model of five-year plans? Number one, there was one primary goal which was linked to every five-year plan. This was unique about five-year plans in India. The problem with this, we had to focus on only one thing in one five-year plan. And even if we did not want to do it, ultimately the idea of five-year plans was this only. Focus on some things that you can do in one period of five years. Why? Because you cannot do everything as the government. Why can you not do everything? The reason is simple because you have limited resources and you can do only so much with those limited resources. So each five-year plan focused on achieving one primary goal within the given timeframe. Second, where and how did they originate? They were adopted from the USSR where the first five-year plan was introduced somewhere in the period of 1925. We were a socialist economy at the time of independence. We were highly influenced by the idea of economy given by USSR and that is where our idea of five-year plans also came from. Thirdly, there was a centralized decision-making attached to five-year planning in India. Why was there centralized decision-making? Well, that was the model of five-year plans that we adopted which came from USSR. We, the plans were decided by the central government at the top level and then they were adopted by all the states in India. This is one of the major criticisms and one of the major reasons behind removing or letting go of five-year plans and replacing it with Neeti Ayog as an advisory body. We will come to this as well very soon. Number four, progressive goals. We focused on or we tried to start with the very basic goals because we were starting with an economy from scratch. And then we thought that we would evolve to higher-order needs like social justice and inclusive growth. We will also see this happening in the five-year plans that we go through very shortly. We started with something very basic like agriculture and rapid industrialization. But then evolved into higher-order needs like social justice, sustainability, inclusive growth, etc. So this was the model of five-year planning in India. I hope it is clear. Let's get into the plans now. If we have a look at the plans, we started with the first five-year plan in the year 1951 to 56. What were the basic ideals behind this five-year plan? It was based on Harald Dummer model. Now you have to go through this model separately, but if I have to give you a very brief outline. So this model focused on accumulating capital, generating money in the economy. Increasing savings and increasing investments, that was the idea behind Harald Dummer model. But it said that we cannot do it unless we have created or we have developed our agriculture. And thus, the focus was laid on agriculture. Along with this, we also focused on inflation, power and transport. These were the micro-focus areas. Why did we focus on inflation as well? Because immediately after independence, we saw the prices of various goods and services rising very rapidly. All the export and import agreements, all the export and import logistics that were in place before independence, everything broke down. And therefore, we saw very high inflation creeping into India. And therefore, the focus moved towards inflation as well. The main purpose of coming out with focus on agriculture in this plan was food self-sufficiency. Majority of Indians were consuming the food that was being imported from other countries despite India being an agricultural economy. Now this was something very ironic and therefore, the lawmakers said, the policymakers said, "Let's try and have self-sufficiency in food as soon as possible." Secondly, control influx of refugees because as these refugees were coming into our economy, they were consuming, they were requiring space. And they were also using the limited resources that the government had. Therefore, there had to be some process of controlling or regulating influx of refugees. These were the primary focus areas of the first five-year plan. It was considered to be a reasonable success and that was a major problem. Why? Because we thought that we have focused enough on agriculture and now we can move on to focusing on other things. And that is when in the second five-year plan, we dropped agriculture and we started focusing on industrialization. And then we saw the agriculture sector going down very fast and we could not pick it up again as we had done in the first five-year plan. Let's move to the second one. Second five-year plan, 1956 to 1961. The Mahalanubis plan of rapid industrialization was adopted in the second five-year plan. What is the major focus of Mahalanubis plan or Mahalanubis model? Heavy and basic industrialization of India. They realized that if you do not create capital goods like industries, you will not be able to grow into a developed economy because whatever you produce, you need capital goods. You need industries, you need machineries. And if you're importing those expensive things, then ultimately you will be indebted to other nations. If you want to grow, if you want to be self-sufficient, if you want to be self-reliant, you have to make sure that your industries are well-created. That is when Mahalanubis model said, "Let the government do it because the private sector does not have enough resources to do it." This was the major focus area of the second five-year plan and this remained in focus till 1991 when the economic reforms came into India. Agriculture was given less priority as I already told you and this we will see happening in all the further five-year plans. The third five-year plan, 1961 to 66 was a disaster. Why? Because 1962, we had Indo-China war. 1965, we have India-Pakistan war. And immediately after that, 1965 and 66, we saw two droughts, consecutive droughts in India. Growth was going well, India had entered a take-off stage. This was the assumption when we started with the third five-year plan. We assumed that we are going to do well. Why? Because the growth numbers coming out were very, very healthy. But we focused on creating a self-reliant and self-generating economy. Agriculture was given priority again on paper. But as I said, through the second five-year plan till 1991, we ignored agriculture. Even though we kept writing about it in our five-year plan papers, okay? This failed due to India-China war in 1962. As I said, in 1965, India-Pakistan war. One second. Yes. And twin droughts in 1965 and 66. The focus shifted from development to defense and development. Why? Because of external aggression. This was also one of the major reasons of failure of third five-year plan. We realized that our borders are porous for the first time we were attacked by countries that we thought that we have good relations with or at least decent relations. And then we realized that we need to focus on defense along with development as well. And that is where we started pushing in a lot of money. That is why our development process slowed down after the third five-year plan. Let's come to the next one. In 1966 to 1969, three years, we had three annual plans. We could not have a five-year plan because of the drought conditions and because of two wars that we fought in the third five-year plan. The focus came on agriculture and this was where agriculture actually shown for India because of the green revolution. Under the green revolution, high-yield variety seeds were introduced. And this is something, the fruits of which we are still reaping till date. So this was a major success and a part of annual plans and not any five-year plan. The fourth five-year plan, 1969 to 74. The import problems during war resulted in new targets. Growth with stability, progressive achievement of self-reliance. Now what happened? Before 1969, we were importing a lot of goods, even agricultural goods. And we realized after the war that people that we relied upon, countries that we relied upon for our imports, actually did not support us after or during the war. And that is why we said, "Let us be self-reliant." We cannot focus, we cannot rely on these countries for our import of basic goods. Therefore, the focus came on growth and stability. By stability, we mean macroeconomic stability which comes with stability in the goods that are being consumed or produced, okay? Progressive achievement of self-reliance. They said, "Let us be self-reliant because we cannot rely on these other countries for import of basic goods because we don't know whether they will be supporting us in time of need or not." This was the most major focus area of the fourth five-year plan, okay? Grow agriculture to enable other sectors to grow, move forward. This was the first time that we realized that if we want industrialization to happen, if we want that India's industrial sector as well as service sector grow, then we need to focus on agriculture as well. Why? Because agriculture is something that provides raw material to every other sector around. Without agriculture, no other sector would have access to raw materials and those sectors would also not be able to grow. So this was something that we realized during the fourth five-year plan. India-Pakistan war again, another one in 1971 after which Bangladesh got independence. This resulted in high inflation and influx of Bangladeshi refugees because of which this plan also failed miserably. Considered a big failure because of high influx of refugees and because we had to divert a lot of resources towards this war. So what is the one takeaway that we are taking from these four plans? We planned for something but then something other happened, some contingency took place because of which the plan failed. So the problem was rigidity attached with five-year plans. Because you cannot predict what will happen in the next five years. And therefore, if you are too rigid with your planning, ultimately whatever contingency happens, whatever unpredictable events take place, your plan will fail no matter what. This was one of the major problems of five-year plans about which we will read very shortly as well. 74 to 79, fifth five-year plan. This was launched by Dr. DP Thar. The major focus of fifth five-year plan was Garibi Hatao. Why? Because of high inflation in the economy, the economy was not doing well, people were suffering. And therefore, the government said, "Let's remove poverty from our country." Self-reliance was another focus. Why? Due to Gulf crisis, oil imports suffered. And India again realized that they cannot rely on other countries for import of basic goods. Therefore, they need to invest in oil production as well. We need to create some kind of supply chain so that external events like the Gulf crisis do not affect our economy to such an extent that we fail as an economy altogether. The emergency 1975 wherein the focus shifted to Prime Minister 20-point program. So the focus moved away from the objectives of fifth five-year plan which was Garibi Hatao and self-reliance and moved towards 20-point program. The plan was terminated in 1978 because the government was removed and replaced with another government. From 1978 to 1980, we had five rolling plans, we did not have five-year plans. Now the first time that we had yearly plans, those were called as annual plans. But the second time, 78 to 80, now they are called as rolling plans and not alwin plans. Please remember this as well. The focus on, in this plan was on employment, but nothing substantial happened because the government that was created was a collusion of various parties against the Congress. And they could not do anything substantial because a lot of people's interests were involved. Ultimately, 1980, again the Congress came back and introduced the sixth five-year plan which was 1980 to 1985. What were the focus areas? Increase national income, modernize technology which was the focus area of Rajiv Gandhi. Decrease poverty and unemployment through skill development and employment generating schemes. This is where the roots of MG Narayaga lie, okay? National Rural Employment Program, NREP, was launched under this sixth five-year plan in this area. It was considered a success because we were able to increase national income. We were able to start the process of modernization of technology. And we were able to focus on reducing poverty and unemployment as well. 1985 to 1990 was the area of the time period of seventh five-year plan where the focus was on food, work and productivity. The economy struggled out of, moved out of Hindu rate of growth which was a generic term given to the low rate of growth that India had been experiencing till the seventh five-year plan. But it was in this period, seventh five-year plan, when we moved out of Hindu rate of growth because of the works of sixth five-year plan, increasing income and modernizing technology, increasing employment through skill development as well. So these were the major focus areas of the economy till the seventh five-year plan. Now let's come to the eighth five-year plan. This was 1992 to 97. In 1991, we reformed our economy, introduced the LPG reforms, liberalization, privatization and globalization reforms. There's another video on LPG reforms, you can go out and watch it on my channel as well, okay? Fiscal and economic reforms under Prime Minister PV Narasimha Rao. These were the major reforms that were introduced and it was considered a success because we liberalized our economy, opened up our economy to the entire world and we started integrating with the global economy. In 1997 to 2002, we had the ninth five-year plan. The focus was on growth with social justice and equality. As I said, we started in the five-year plans in 1947 with the basic areas like agriculture, industries, service sector to some extent, etc., poverty, unemployment. But now we are moving further, we are evolving ourselves and now the focus area moved towards social justice and equality because we knew that we are growing but with this growth there is a problem. A few people are becoming very rich whereas a lot of people are becoming very, very poor. Therefore, there has to be movement of money from these very rich towards these very poor as well which we call as equality. Everyone should have some basic money in with themselves, some basic employment so that they can have a decent standard of living. That is where we focused upon in the ninth five-year plan, 1997 to 2002. The state was now considered a facilitator and growth was to be achieved with the private sector. This was in line with the, with the LPG reforms wherein we had said that the state will not intervene into the activities of the private sector a lot now and the state will allow the private sector to flourish, okay? Social justice and equality by focusing on education, health and infrastructure. These were the areas that had to be taken up by the government. Everything other than these three areas or you know some other basic areas where the private sector does not come in, that is where the government will work. Everywhere else, the reins will be given to the private sector. Priority of the government on agriculture and rural development in order to generate employment and eradicate poverty. It was also realized that agriculture cannot be left to the private sector. We tried it in the past and we failed because agriculture may, the government has to come in. The private sector is not very enthusiastic about it. And if you want to develop rural areas, if you want to eradicate poverty in rural areas, then you have to focus on agriculture because that is where the rural India lives, okay? 2002 to 2007, this was tenth five-year plan. The targets of development were redefined to reduce gender gaps in literacy and wage rate, reduce mortality rates, drinking water, clean major rivers. Governance for the first time this was given importance. Agriculture increased role of state and Panchayati Raj institutions in planning. So now we started talking about governance, we started talking about social justice. We started talking about equality. We started talking about decentralization, role of states and Panchayati Raj institutions in planning. We started talking about mortality, drinking water, cleaning major rivers. So these were the areas of social justice where everybody should have access to basic facilities so that they have a sustainable and environmentally friendly and a good living standard. So these were the focus areas of the tenth five-year plan, 2002 to 2007. Let's come to 2007 to 2012, eleventh five-year plan. In this plan, the aim was towards faster and more inclusive growth. Now we are moving, evolving further. We want to grow faster and at the same time, we want to make sure that the growth is inclusive. We want to make sure that there is equality. Everybody is growing, not only a few Ambaris and Adanis are growing, everybody is growing. So these were the major focus areas. SCs, STs, minorities, villages. में इलेक्ट्रिसिटी होनी चाहिए, all-weather roads in villages, broadband in all villages. These were the focus written and focus areas of the government. And the government actually introduced a lot of programs in order to make them a reality. Today, we can say with pride that the entire country has been electrified, the entire country has all-weather roads. Although there are of course, fudging in numbers that happens, but to a large extent, we have achieved it as well. We are working towards it thanks to the eleventh five-year plan of 2007 to 2012. Then came the last five-year plan, 2012 to 2017. The aim had evolved further from the eleventh five-year plan where we said faster and inclusive growth. Now we said, "The growth has to be sustainable as well." The growth has to survive for a long period of time. We don't want growth for just five years, 10 years, 15 years. We want growth for 50 years in one go, 100 years in one go. That means more sustainable growth, okay? Growth that does not harm the environment. Growth that does not exclude a lot of people from its development, okay? The problems were high inflation and stalled infrastructure projects. In the eleventh five-year plan, we launched a lot of infrastructure projects in order to achieve these electricity in villages, all-weather roads, growth, growing, focus towards SCST minorities, broadband and various other infrastructure development projects were taken up. But because of the kind of bureaucracy that have, that we have in India, we saw a lot of stalled infrastructure projects. Of course, there were external reasons as well like the global financial crisis and the eurozone crisis that happened in 2008 and 2011. But a lot of internal reasons were also responsible for this. We will try and come back to this because right now, the Modi government is also doing the same, focusing on infrastructure a lot. That is why people have been taxed so much. And now the government says, "Don't worry, we are growing infrastructure. After five years, 10 years, you will see a lot of development immediately and then the taxes and everything will go down, you will have a better quality of life." We have to wait and see how the government delivers on these promises of infrastructure development. So these were the 12 five-year plans that we had. Let's try and understand the pros and cons of the model of five-year planning in India. What are the major pros, what are the major advantages? We had limited resources, so we had to focus only on urgent causes immediately after development. Lot of people come and say, "If we did not have the five-year plans after independence, we would have done better." We don't know that, why? Because the kind of resources that we have now is comparatively very large compared to what we had then. And because of these limited resources, the government knew that they can only focus on the urgent causes. They cannot do a lot with the limited money that they have. And that is why the five-year plans focused on small, small targets, only on one or one or two primary things. Number two, underdevelopment. India was grossly underdeveloped at the time of independence. The government had to identify the most underdeveloped areas and focus on them first. Majority of Indians were involved in agriculture. If we had not focused on agriculture, that economy would have crashed. Majority of people involved in agriculture were using very obsolete technologies. Therefore, the government also had to focus on industrialization. We were importing all the oil that we needed. Therefore, we had to create companies like ONGC that could focus on distilling, that could focus on you know, taking out as much oil as possible from our shores. So we had to invest in heavy industrialization in all these companies and the government only could do it. Therefore, at the time of independence, the kind of underdevelopment that we had, the government only could make sense of this kind of underdevelopment and focus on the most urgent and important areas, okay? Specify government's priority. Five-year plans had this, had this unique ability to specify what the government focuses. And that automatically percolates to every bureaucrat, percolates to every state government in the country. Therefore, it makes it very clear that we want to achieve this goal and in order to achieve this goal, we will do this. So it was very easy for everyone to relate as to what the direction of our economy should be because the government specified its priority very clearly, okay? And through that, it gave direction to the system. It automatically specified and by that specification, it gave direction to the entire government system. What are the major cons, what are the major advantages of the five-year plan system? Ignoring areas that needed government support. A lot of areas like agriculture after 1956 were ignored and it needed government support. It could not survive without government support. But due to these flaws in the five-year plans, the government ended up ignoring these areas. Family planning, we ignored it grossly and because of that, now we see India is the largest, largest, second largest in terms of population. And because of that, we suffer a lot of problems as well. We have limited resources, too many people to feed to. And ultimately, the resources become limited because there are, there are so many people around. So ignoring areas that needed government support, a lot of these areas were ignored. Why were they ignored? Because the five-year plans focused on one or two primary areas. And in that process, they forgot to think about various other areas that also needed to be catered to. Popularist, populist decisions were taken like Garibi Hatao in the fifth five-year plan. A lot of decisions by the government were taken in order to win elections. And they were made a part of five-year planning process as well, okay? Rigidity for five years. We talked about rigidity, I gave you an example of rigidity. How with the onset of wars with China and Pakistan, we failed in our five-year plans. But if we did not have five-year plans, then we could have done better, we don't know. Because of five-year planning system, the system became very rigid that this is what we are going to do till 1974 till 1965. No matter what happens, no matter how many wars we have to fight. And that rigidity affected India very badly. Using five-year plans for electioneering, this is connected with populist decisions. At one time, we were coming out with the decisions in five-year plans that would be liked by the people no matter how important or unimportant they are. On the second hand, during elections, we were coming out with new promises of five-year plans, okay? And all-round development was ignored. We focused on one or two areas that needed focus and in that process, we ignored a lot of important other areas as well, okay? How can we conclude at the end? Can we say that it was a failure or can we say that it was a success? What are the points that show that it was a failure? When you are preparing for civil services, you never conclude by saying that yes, it was a failure. You say that yes, it was a failure because of these reasons. But it was also a success because of these reasons. That is how you think, that is how a bureaucrat or a civil servant thinks. What are the reasons that show us that yes, indeed, five-year plans were a failure? Number one, heavily dependent on internal political stability and external support and stability. Whenever there was external support absent or external instability like wars within, with Pakistan and China or you know, independence of Bangladesh or anything else, that directly affected the five-year plans. They were heavily dependent on both internal stability as well as external stability. Multiple targets were started in sixth five-year plan which resulted in better performance as I had told you. The purpose of five-year plans was defeated because five-year plans were created in order to focus on one or two primary areas. But when we are focusing on everything that comes under the sun, then what is the need of five-year plans? And that is the primary reason that we got rid of five-year plans after the 12th five-year plan, okay? Because we realized that now we cannot focus on one specific area. We have to focus on all-round development of our economy. One-size-fits-all approach, one of the major reasons through which we can say it was a failure. We created a centralized system where the central government decided at the top what the five-year plan will look like and it had to be followed by every state government. One major example that I read through recently was National Malaria Eradication Program. After 1991, the government took out all the money that was all the fund that was allocated to malaria eradication program. While in the major, you know, in a lot of states, it did not have any impact. But because this funding was removed in states like Orissa and Maharashtra where there were a lot of tribal living there. A lot of people who were suffering because of malaria. All that funded got sucked out of the economy, sucked out of the system. And now there was nothing, no plan for national or no plan for malaria. And now there was nothing, no plan for national or no plan for malaria eradication. We saw a lot of deaths after nineteen ninety-one and ninety-two because of the withdrawal of money allocated to National Malaria Eradication Program. So the funds reduced and Orissa tribals suffered heavily. We rarely think about these things, but because of five-year plans, this problem arose. If the state governments had been given funds and more power to decide where to invest this money, then Orissa government or Maharashtra government must have allocated more funds to malaria eradication and taking care of their SCSTs and tribal areas. Okay. Let's come to the success areas. How can we say that the five-year plans were a success? Two major reasons. Number one, the Mahalanubis model of heavy industrialization was introduced because of five-year plan and that created the platform on which in India's industrialization has developed. If we did not have Mahalanubis model, thanks to the second five-year plan, we might not have seen heavy industrialization. By tenth and eleventh plan, we were focusing on many issues in one plan, balancing resources well and doing better. So we had realized that we cannot focus on one or two primary areas and therefore we changed our perspective in five-year plans and started focusing on all-round development on a lot of things. And that is when in tenth and eleventh five-year plan, we saw success coming our way. But we ultimately realized that five-year plans are not required. We can do much better by giving more funds and more powers to the state government by doing something called as cooperative federalism whereby the states would have more freedom to decide what they want to do and a body at the top like Niti Ayog would advise the states. This is what you can do. This is what you can do. This is what you must do. The states have the power to, to either do it or do something else according to their areas requirements. Okay. So this was about five-year plans, very specific, very focused upon the need of UPSC aspirants. I hope it was a good brief session and I'm very sure you've learned something new to the five-year plan. If you have, do not forget to subscribe to the channel for more such videos on answer writing, on essay writing as well as on the core and fundamentals of economy. I'll see you very soon. Take care. Bye-bye. Jai.